The House of Rises, hear ye, hear ye, that Hamlin County Commission Meeting is now in session. The Honorable Bobby Han presiding. Please remain standing.
Thanks everyone for your attendance tonight. We encourage you to turn off all your devices and the commissioners, please turn your mics on. To open our meeting tonight, I'll call on Commissioner Rodney Long for the prayer.
Just bow our heads and pray, please. Father, we just want to thank you tonight for your gift to your son died on the cross, Lord Father, that gave us a way out of this sinful world. Lord, we just ask that you tonight, in this meeting, give us wisdom, give us knowledge and understanding, Father. Lord, you have blessed this county in many, many ways. And Lord, we just ask that your hand be up on this county and upon this commission as we conduct your business. And as always, we will always ask everything in your name, in your name only. Amen.
Mr. Harville, let's do the pledge.
Face the flag. Attention. Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everyone lightly say. First item of business tonight, we have some awards to be passed out for. We have a quorum. As I was saying, we have some Years of Service Award. So when you're called to the well, please join us. And we'll also have our commissioners. In a couple cases, we'll have some interested parties. First up tonight, I want to ask Steve Bales to join us in the well, along with his commissioner, Rodney Long. And I'd also like to bring Commissioner Thomas Jody, a former member of the EMA. Steve Bales, I'm sorry. I want to recognize Steve Bales, 28 years as with the Hamlin County EMA. It's quite an accomplishment, but thank you for your service.
Thank you. If you don't mind, we also want to present him with a plaque. That's a lot of years, a lot of people, a lot of directors and a lot of changes. And he's stuck in with it, so. And I'm also going to say, there's no humor home jokes that we need tonight. Thank you, Steve. I appreciate everything you've done. When I first came in, he helped a lot with a lot of events and was willing to do that, even though he was very busy. So I want to say thank you.
Can you, gentlemen, have anything you want to say?
Oh, really quick. Mr. Bales and I have known each other a long time. We actually served on the EMA together. I was a volunteer, as he, for the Mercy난민사당 for many, many, many years. And we worked together. It's a thankless job. Not many people even know that there is a Mercy난민사당 of volunteers here in town. At one point in time, before we had enough, we were the reserve deputies for the county. We controlled a lot. There's times we were the only people on the road to Hamlin County, apart from the county. And Mr. Bales was always there. He helped all the newer guys. He helped me transition in. And he's just done one more service for our county, and I want to thank you, Stephen.
And I would ask that her commissioner, Kyle Walker, to come to the well, along with Teresa West, her circuit court clerk, and her entourage. Flag reads, I'd say it's a double whammy here. It's your service award to Hamlin County Government. As a deputy clerk, I have no idea what happened. But you're going to get your 10-year award. I told you. Okay. And so you get your 10-year award and your 15-year award. That may be a 25-year award. Thank you so much. You have anything?
I do. I want to tell her, I appreciate her. She's been there. She's been there for me really since I started, and I appreciate her.
Thank you, Teresa. Thank you very much. There it is, Teresa. Ah, yeah. Last Miss Debbie Aynherne to join us in the well. Katie West Moore. Again, this is Hamlin County Government, Years of Service Award to Katie West Moore, Deputy Clerk, 10 years.
And I appreciate how she does. She's been there for me, and I really appreciate her.
You have anything?
No. Years of service, this means everything. It means dedication and everything.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. We'll move down to item number two, 2A, public comments for three minutes. Time limit regarding non-agenda items. Ms. Noe.
Linda Noe, 2343 Joe Stevens Road. The non-agenda item that I'd like to talk about is the Hamlin County Road Commission. We have found over the past, it's been about a year now, that of course, the road commissioners were receiving payments they never should have received. They voted in August to receive invoices, and they voted that they would pay those invoices. I understand the commissioners, road commissioners did receive invoices, some of them paid. One's in a pay plan. But unless things have changed, and I welcome the Finance Department to correct me if that's the case, there are some who have not paid. That needs to be taken care of. When you vote for something that you will pay back what you received, you need to do that. Of course, we also know that they received pay for four meetings that they were not invoiced for. They didn't attend the meetings. And yes, the meetings were canceled. But what the private act says, if you don't attend for whatever reason, you don't get paid. That's $4,600 that some road commissioners, including one commissioner up here, received and have not paid back. The other item I want to mention is, and I spoke about this at the road commission meeting, the most recent meeting, the road commission needs to be abolished. It has no use. It has no purpose. It has no power. It has no authority. What we've seen is they meet, and in fact, this is the most incredible thing, and I invite you to check on this. I think Mr. Anderson's here. He could verify this. They've been kicked out of meeting at the road commission building, the Herbert Harville Drive Road Commission meeting or building. That is incredible, and that shows the contempt that some people have for the road commissioners. So when you put everything together, you've got road commissioners that haven't paid, you've got road commissioners that didn't attend meetings and got paid, but have done, have not paid back for those four meetings. If you care about the county, the county taxpayers, the law, you need to help make sure they pay that back. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next on non-agenda items, if I get this right, Donna Neff, you'll come to the podium, please. Did I pronounce that correctly?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I live at 5719 Long Creek Road. And I guess this is under number 10, the campers. We're giving them two years now.
Okay. Hold on. That comes at a different time. This is for non-agenda items.
Sorry.
That's okay. You'll get a chance here in just a minute. Anyone else on non-agenda items? State your name and address, please.
Windeland Holden, 8150 West Point Drive, Albert, Tennessee, 37877. What I want to talk about is the road department. I'm a taxpayer. I don't like my tax dollars being taken. I think they should pay back for the four meetings that was canceled. And I think the ones that still owe the money should pay it back. They're going to pay it back one way or the other. That's all I got to say.
Well, thank you for your comments. Anyone else on agenda?
Justine Jones, 3436 Old Kentucky Road. I want to talk about the proposed changes to the county attorney's pay. We've already established-
Excuse me. That's an agenda item?
Yeah, but it's under general, too. It says general and non-agenda.
I understand, but it's an agenda item. We're dealing with non-agenda items. You'll get your chance.
Three minutes. I only have three minutes to talk, and there's more than one.
You'll get your chance, okay? Anyone else on non-agenda items? We'll move down to agenda items. Again, you'll have three minutes.
Donna Neff, 5719 Long Creek Road. So I missed the last camper meeting. But I'm under the understanding that they're going to have two years now. Is that for campers that's not hooked up to sewage and light posts? Or is that for everybody? Because I have four campers behind my property, a house, a shed. I don't know how many people live on the property, how many animals are on the property. And I think everybody here knows that my daughter was attacked by three of their dogs. Since then, they have had, they have two more full-blooded pit bulls that have been out. But who is, I'm beginning to wonder if they don't have to abide by the law. I mean, y'all have known for a year that they're living there on campers that's not hooked up properly. They had raw sewage running onto my father's property. Everybody knows that. They know that they had dogs that are aggressive. I mean, if a poodle come off that property, it'd be aggressive. I can't tell you why. I can't even mow my yard without carrying a gun. Somebody has got to intervene here. Tell me, how many people live in there? And how many campers are allowed on the .81 acres with a house with one septic tank? I mean, it's ridiculous. I need help. I need answers. I need to know, are these people going to have two more years? Because I can't put up with two more years.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Agenda items?
I'd like to talk about another private act, the item on the county attorney amendment that Mr. Long has proposed. I've attached the original private act, which has been amended a number of times. So you really can't call it the 1949 Act. It's, I think the last time was 1987 when it was amended. Under that private act, the county attorney is paid $1,200 for attending finance committee and county commission meetings. Unfortunately, in the past, the county attorney pocketed the 1,200 for his attendance at the above meetings, and then turned around and billed the county by the hour for his attendance at the above meetings. Two separate payments from the county for one legal service. Under the private act proposed by Mr. Long, the county attorney would get that $1,200 retainer with no attendance requirements, just a, hey, here's $1,200 for you. So I went back and I thought, you know, what the state does is they try to figure out what's the cost of this. And on the sheet I've handed you, I went back to the 2024 meetings, January through December, put down the minutes for each meeting, and then added them up. And if the county attorney were going under Mr. Long's proposal, he would have received $3,447.50 for attending the 2024 meetings. Is he having trouble with that, Bobby? With the puzzle? Under the private act we currently have, he would have received $1,200 for attending those meetings. So what Mr. Long's proposal would do is almost, I guess, three times as expensive if the county attorney gets to bill for the meetings instead of being paid the $1,200 retainer, as is currently the case. The extra cost to have the county attorney attend finance and committee meetings under Mr. Long's proposal are huge versus the cost if we keep the current private act, which obtains his attendance for only $1,200. What would you do if it were your personal money? I hope that each of you, as an accountable conservative commissioner, will vote to reject the costly, long, private act money giveaway and keep the current-
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you for letting me.
Anyone else for agenda items? State your name and address.
My name's Jeff Hunter. It's 166 Gulf Street, Whitesburg, Tennessee. I'm wanting to talk about the camper deal. I just found out about this yesterday, and I've been scrambling to find out all about it. I called my rep this morning, Mr. Bell. Even though we disagree, I think we had a pretty good conversation. And some of my concerns, I mean, nobody wants sewage dumped on their property. It's illegal. We got code enforcement that should be doing the job and getting this. We're punishing the whole county for a few bad apples. I mean, I do have a camper. I've got electric to it all the time because of the refrigerator. It works, it don't work like a normal refrigerator. It works off of ammonia. So the longer you keep it up, the longer it lasts. That's how they made refrigerators when we first started. But getting back to it, there's a few things in here that concern me. One, a permit required, 000 feet. Well, wait a minute. We're not silly here. We know once we pass this, you can pencil in anything you want. That should be decided before we vote on this. And the other thing, you can't park your camper in front of your property. But you cannot request a variance if your property don't allow you to park it behind. Well, according to your own website, a variance costs you $50. So why isn't that in the paperwork? I remember back years ago here, we talked about a wheel tax. And Miss Maude Biggs, she promised us two years to build the general fund. Well, what happened to that two years? We're still panicked. Don't be silly. Once they get their foot in the door, it's an open check. And it's the same way with this. Look, if I got, I came here from Florida in 93. And when I moved here, I was told I'm in construction. I worked for a general contractor in town for 26 years, built a hospital and other big important buildings. When I moved here, I could sit down at lunchtime on a napkin, draw out a house plan, and I could go get a permit. Now, do I agree with that? No. We do need codes for safety, just like this. We need safety. This ain't about safety to me. We got code enforcement that could do this, but they're not. You're trying to put taxes on us. My suggestion is this, we didn't have time to organize everyone here. I'd like to request a 30-day moratorium. Put this off for 30 days and let us get it out to the public.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. Thank you. Anyone else on agenda items?
Mr. Chairman, what was that gentleman's name, boys?
Jeff Hunter.
Thank you, sir.
Justine Jones, 3436 Old Kentucky Road. And I guess I only get one talking point on this agenda. So I guess I'll pick campers.
Excuse me?
I only get one talking point on this agenda.
You get three minutes. You can talk on as many points as you want.
Thank you so much. This issue is not black and white. Despite how some would like to paint it, we are not here demanding lawlessness. We're here asking for fairness, for reasonable solutions, and for a chance to live without government overreach deciding our futures. We've heard over and over again that living in a camper is unsafe, yet someone, somehow it's perfectly safe if it's the same camper isn't a campground. How does that make any sense? If this is truly about safety, then let's talk about solutions to ensure safety. Instead of outright ban, why not establish regulations that address sanitation, electrical safety, and property standards? Why create a, why not create a pathway to compliance instead of eviction notice? We keep hearing that this has been the law for 30 years. If that's the case, why is it only now, after three decades, suddenly an urgent matter? Why have so many people been allowed to purchase land, live on it in their campers for years, and even pay taxes on it, only to now be told they have no right to do so? If this law was so critical, why wasn't it enforced all along? Commissioner Walker has presented this as a take it or leave it situation. Either you pass these regulations and families get 24 months before being forced out of their homes, or you reject them and families lose their homes tomorrow. This is not leadership. That is not how responsible government works. A real leader would look at the situation and ask, how do we create a fair path forward? A real leader wouldn't say, these are your only two choices. Pick your poison. This commission has the power to amend this ordinance. You have the power to create a solution that allows people to live safely in campers on their own property. But right now, that option's not even being considered? Why? Anyone with two eyes can see this isn't about health and safety. This is about control. If it were about safety, we'd be discussing things like septic permits, fire codes, and electrical standards. Instead, citizens are being told to pack up and leave because someone behind this desk has decided that campers just shouldn't be allowed. That is not how a free county operates. The people sitting in this room tonight, the ones watching from home who elected you, deserve more than an ultimatum. They deserve a fair and reasonable solution. To the commissioners who oppose the regulations, thank you, and please stand your ground. Do not be silenced by political pressure or one man's black and white thinking. To those who support it, I ask you, are you really prepared to tell families, veterans, retirees, and hard-working citizens that they have no right to live on their own land? That their home, no matter how modest, is unacceptable in your eyes? Are you truly willing to ignore-
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. Thank you. Have anyone else for agenda items?
Hello, Mike Johncox, 3121 Three Springs Road. I want to talk on the camper issue also, the storage and the living in it. I just think you're trying to take away landowner's rights, just chiseling away. I don't believe that a landowner should have to be required to get that permit to use a camper on their own land temporarily. You know, I shouldn't have to come to the county, whether in person or through the web, and request permission to take my camper up on the back of my eight acres and stay in it. I think that's overreach on your part, and I think the, I should be able, you know, a landowner should be able to use their campers as a permanent residence as long as they meet them requirements set forth in Section C that you had there, which I believe are still very reasonable for safety and for the health protection. And all campers that are being, in the past, as a resident should be grandfathered. And the reason I say that is because it has been allowed. You know, somebody's been in it 10, 20 years, you can't just kick them out. They should be grandfathered until the landowner quits using them. No upgrade to a newer unit, and only for the landowners by permit. And that, with that permit, they should be inspected annually to confirm they meet the standards set forth above. The county has allowed it for years, so at least show compassion for them. I have seen far worse than some of the- I have seen far worse than some of the country houses I passed on the road coming down here today, if you want to look at filth. I was in the campground business for 40-plus years. Around here, the average cost for putting a camper on, in a campground is about $300 a month. Then you got your utilities, your power, and your heat in the wintertime. A lot of these people can't afford that. And just another thought I have, and, you know, I hear you all talking about compassion. You don't want to make nobody homeless. But, you know, you gotta show some compromise. And I believe that the people that have actually showed up here that are being affected, now, I'm not affected by this, but if I wanted to use my camper on my back property, I am being affected. I think that they, you know, if they have got the, I'm trying to think the right word here, that they got the fourth thought to show up here and plead their case, that they ought to be grandfathered to and living in their camper, and that should be continued. Thank you.
We thank you for your comments very much. Anyone else on agenda items?
Wendy Ellis, 598 Ripley Town. We've been fighting this for a year. A year that these people does not know if they're going to have a home or not. You know, after last meeting, I was told that y'all was going to put a hush to my godly talk. But when my God tells me to do something or to say something, I'm going to do it. I'm not scared of no man or woman on this earth, but I will do what Jesus Christ tells me to do. Why do you think I've spent time on this for a whole year? I don't even live in this county anymore, even though I own a home and land.
Excuse me? You don't live in the county, you do not have the right to speak.
I have a home here.
You don't live here.
But anyway.
You have to be a resident.
It doesn't matter. This is America. If one person wants to stand up for another, they should be able to.
Ma'am, that's the county rules. We won't permit it.
Well, I could say I live there tomorrow because my stuff's there.
Ma'am, that's the rules.
Well, I'm going to tell you right now.
You want us to follow rules. You're asking us to follow rules. We're following rules.
God is judging you all. I've told you this before, and I've told you for the last year, and I don't understand why you won't let me have two minutes.
Because we didn't know you weren't a resident.
Because I was going to say something about God?
No, ma'am. I'm all in favor of God.
I would hate to be y'all on judgment day.
Please, please, please. Thank you. To answer your question, I don't think that anyone on this commission is against God. I can speak myself personally that I welcome God. Spent time in prayer before coming up those stairs. Well, you can sit there and talk all you want, but you don't have the right to speak at this commission. Do we have anyone else on agenda? Ma'am, do you want to stay in here?
You don't own property in Ham County.
What?
You do not own property in Ham County. You've stood here and said that to this commission when you do not. 598 is not in your name. No, it's not.
It's in under my father's name, and I have.
Well, you do not own it, ma'am.
You neither reside nor own property. It's disallowed. That's it. Anyone else on agenda items? Ma'am, if you don't stop, you're going to be asked to leave.
Tom Baki, 4679 Harbor Drive. I'd like to thank the commission for the privilege to come up and address you. Also like to thank you for all the efforts everyone put into this complicated problem for the campers and RVs. It's a lot more complicated certainly than I've realized, but I was aware of the problem, and I brought this to your attention in December, my concern. One of the addresses that I brought up is actually, one of the addresses Mrs. Neff is also talking about, the fact that they've moved four campers in around this small, single-family house. From the outside, I don't see how that's a practical thing, but hopefully you'll be able to address this. Sadly, just down the street from Mrs. Neff's house on Long Creek Road, about four months ago, someone parked a camper in the driveway, took all the wheels off, and the lights are on, and residue from household living is beginning to accumulate outside in the driveway. Monday, I drive by, and now there's another camper in the backyard. And it's pretty early in the morning, and the lights are on. So when I go by Wednesday afternoon, there's an adult just coming out the door with what looks like a two-year-old child, and sets her down in the grass. And I think somebody, probably there are other adults in the county, need to be concerned about that. The child had no, no thought or anybody asked her what she wanted to do. She didn't have any privileges extended to her. Somebody just gave her this circumstance. But I don't think this is really the right place for a child to be in. So I'm hoping that you'll be able to move forward with the legislation and finally put the problem to rest and bring everybody up to spec. Thanks a lot.
Thank you so much. Appreciate your comments. Have anyone else on agenda items?
Fran Holden, 8150 West Point Ground. I've asked you all to grandfather in the campers that are hooked up to electric, sewer, and water, and get the code enforcer to get those that are violating the law. I've seen it ever since I've been a kid. And it's sad how this county has become. I mean, if you can grandfather in the junkyards, you ought to be able to grandfather in these campers that are hooked up to electric, water, and sewer. That may be the only home they have. And it's so sad. It is sad. It breaks my heart.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have anyone else on agenda items?
Lord Smith Poe, 2052, between the Circle Moore Stand. I want to thank you for the opportunity to talk. First of all, I do not agree with the campers that are not hooked up correctly. I do not. And I don't think that's right. But they're the ones that are hooked up correct to sewer, electric, water, and everything. I don't see that that is a problem. This man that I take care of, well, he's got a camper on my lot, which is where I live. And since December, he's been in the hospital three times. He's in really bad shape, and somebody needs to take care of him. He had to have three units of blood the first time, and two, and then he had to have five units. And if you have to tax him to be able to set the camper there or buy a permit, I had to buy a permit for my double-wide modular home. I had to buy a permit. I had to buy a permit for everything. And I think that's not a problem to get him to have to buy the permits. And if they're in the, what's the zone for mobile homes? A1, maybe?
A1.
I'm not familiar with that, what zone it is.
A1.
A1? Well, if as long as they're in A1, why not just leave them alone? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. Anyone else on agenda items?
I'm Joseph Hawn, 1400 Shinbone Road, Rustville, Tennessee, 37860. This would be on the camper part, but I'm going to give you some numbers here. In 2020, the median home price was at $200,000. This was brought up about two months ago. At, in December of 2024, the average home price was at $291,491. That's a 45.7% increase over the four years. The, if you look at the Tennessee Housing Development Agency, the debt-to-income ratio is 45%. If you're wanting to buy a $200,000 home, you're at, $4,000 a month is what you need to bring in. There's a be many workers within the counties that probably don't apply to that. So if you're, if you've got employees that's working for you like that, and they ain't making $48,000 a year without any other bills, they're not going to be able to buy a home. Now, let's go up to the 291,400, 291,491 would be a $300,000 home. To get to that, if you don't have any bills, you need to be bringing $6,100 in a month. That's $73,200 a year. If you've got additional bills, such as car payments, student loans, any things like that, you can get up to $6,600 bringing it, $79,200. I'd ask this committee to look over and think more about the future. Your kids, your grandkids, the generations to come. And when you come to vote here, and Mr. Walker brings this up tonight, I hope that the silence, these numbers weigh on your heart so hard that the silence come over you all. The students can't vote, yea or nay? That it dies without a motion or a second. And then, when they call down at the planning commission tomorrow and ask, they can say, we don't have that rules right at the present time because we're looking at the financial part for the citizens of this area. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else on agenda items? Okay, C9, we'll move down to item three. Appointments for our District 11 and 12 constable. Do we have any nominations? Ms. Howe?
Yeah, we do. Oh, yeah, we do.
Willie?
That's it, Stanley. Okay.
So we have a nomination for Willie Stanley. Correct?
I'm thinking that's it.
Do we have any other nominations? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Howe. We will now vote the motion. You sure can.
He's the guy we met.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. And he's from Elkhorn, Kentucky. And I was very impressed with, boy, I can't remember his name except it's in my notes. But anyway, I think he would be, he may be the only name, but he'll be a good choice. Thank you, sir.
And to piggyback on that, he has law enforcement experience.
Right.
And he's very knowledgeable.
And willing.
Intelligent and willing. You want to stand up, Willie, and let everybody take a look at you?
There he is.
Willie Stanley. I'm from Cleveland, Kentucky, I was in the law court for a hundred years. And I went to the O.P. Academy, worked there as well, worked for Sheriff's Office. Been with you here in the law court, and you are definitely doing good work.
Thank you, Mr. Stanley. Appreciate it. Do we have any questions, comments? We have no other motions? We have no other candidates? So we're going to, we'll vote this on the board. Okay, we'll vote this. Now we can vote. Everybody will.
Twelve yeas, one nay.
Motion passes. Our new constable for District 11 and 12 is Willie Stanley. Welcome aboard. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Swear him in if you need a moment.
Okay. Swear at him?
Mr. Stanley, would you come forward, please? I do Willie Stanley.
I do Willie Stanley.
solemnly swear that I will.
I will.
Well and truly serve.
Well and truly serve.
The state of Tennessee in the office of constable. You will call the peace of the state. Be kept to the best of my power. And that I will rest. All persons that go in my sight. Are defensorly. Or may commit. Any riot. Afraid or other breach of the peace. And will use my best endeavor. On complaint made. To apprehend all felons. Riots. Persons. Riots is big at the center. And if such persons flee. Or make resistance. I will pursue and make hugh and cry. According to law. And that I will faithfully. And without delay. Execute and return. All lawful process. Granted to me. And that I will. Well and truly. According to my power and ability. Do and execute. All over duties of the office of constable. I do solemnly swear. For the constitutions. Tennessee and the United States. Congratulations, sir. You're a good man.
Very good, fellers.
That's very well. You don't read them or read them. Really, maybe on Ariel I D.
Yes, sir.
You're good. You're good, buddy. Miss Fett, we got his name.
Mr. Stanley.
Thank you, Mr. Stanley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Move down to item four. Calendar Rules Committee. Chairman Thomas Stover.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First off, we have item 4A, which is the approval of the consent calendar items. And I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any comments or questions? Let's vote the motion.
Twelve yeas, one nay.
Motion passes.
We have item 4B. And with that, we have changes that everyone should have at their, at their station, which will be the approval of the regular calendar items with the following changes. 8A, amending the private act for county attorney, separating into Section 1 and Section 2 for votes as to match the memorandum of consideration from Finance Chairman Rodney Long dated March 10. from Finance Chairman Rodney Long dated March tenth, twenty-twenty-five. Section one being, county attorney shall be elected by the Hamlin County Legislative Body annually in the September meeting. Section two, county attorney shall be paid an annual retainer fee of twelve hundred dollars. Also, for legal services performed on behalf of the county, the county attorney shall be entitled to receive additional compensation and reimbursement for actual expenditures incurred. And I put that in the form of a motion.
We're gonna vote these separate.
We'll vote them separate before we add. Yes, sir. Then we'll start, and we'll go back to item four B. And we will vote the A first, amending the private act. And it will be section one, county attorney shall be elected by the Hamlin County Legislative Body annually in the September meeting. And I put that in the form of a motion.
Do we have a motion?
Salmo.
Do we have a second?
Salmo.
Okay, Mr. Horner, we have a second. Anyone have any questions or comments? Okay, we'll be voting this off the board. Madam Clerk?
Debbie Ahern?
Yes.
Danny Bell?
Yes.
Thomas Stoney?
Yes.
Edna Green?
No.
Stan Harville?
Yes.
Bobby Hawn?
Aye.
Tim Horner?
Yes.
Joe Hudson?
Yes.
Peggy Howell?
Yes.
Rodney Long?
Yes.
Mike Richardson?
Yes.
Wayne Niss Smith?
Yes.
Kyle Walker?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
Then again, we have in eight A two, which again is amending the private act for county attorney, we have section two, where county attorney shall be paid an annual retainer fee of twelve hundred dollars. Also, for legal services performed on behalf of the county, the county attorney shall be entitled to receive additional compensation and reimbursement for actual expenses incurred. And I put that in the form of a motion.
Salmo.
We have a motion, we have a second. Ms. Ahern, any questions or comments? Let me, uh, Ms. Howell.
No, no, you go ahead, sir.
Let me say this, and I know we had, uh, Ms. Noe brought up a good point on the, uh, the cost. It would be over three thousand dollars, but let's also keep in mind that if we were to bring this twelve hundred dollars into two thousand, twenty-five dollars, Mr. Mayor, I believe it was over fifteen thousand dollars. Uh, he, he reported on that a couple of weeks ago. So, either way you look at it, it's, it's a bargain basement deal. So, I, I think we're pretty good. You, did you have that?
The figure was, if you used, uh, the latest revision, when sixty-seven, sixty-eight, I think it was, if you use those, that would be nine dollars and forty-five cents an hour or per dollar. So, that would equal eleven thousand, three hundred and forty dollars.
Okay. So, you can see it's still a substantial savings and, and to get the kind of work that we get done. Okay, any other questions or comments? Ms. Howell, I think you had something.
Yes, sir, I did. Um, I'm, I'm a little in a quandary as if it's not broke, you know, why fix it? And number one, uh, two, um, at the time, when, when he was elected, he sort of agreed to all of that. And so, um, I'm sort of not seeing it right now, and I'm thinking maybe in September, when it comes up again, that might be a time to think about that. But this was agreed upon, uh, in entering in the contract and, uh, it's sort of not broke, so, um, th- those are my comments. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay. Uh, Ms. Green, sorry.
Thank you, Chairman Hahn. First of all, I don't think I heard Mr. Capes ask for this. So evidently, he's very happy with what he makes. He gets paid for all the other departments besides what he does for the mayor's office, the planning department, and a few others. So, it's not like he's working for free. Now, the twelve hundred is a retainer, but if I remember the wording of that correctly, that is for him to attend the finance and the commission meetings. And in some of the hours, like the last meeting we had was two and a half hours. That would cost the county citizens more money, and we need to be budgeted. We don't need to be throwing money out the door. I looked at the totals of three thousand, four hundred and forty-seven dollars and fifty cents for twenty-four. And twenty-five may be a lot more, mo- more. We have, we're getting into some very heavy items this year that are gonna be very long in discussion. So, why do we need to do this? I don't see the concern. I don't see the need. And I, for one, as a conservative, think that we need to be a lot more conservative with citizens' money than spend it. I just don't see it. Thank you. Without further ado.
Thank you. Mr. Doty?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, just a quick thing. This is not to decide whether we pass this or not. This is merely to add it to
Yeah, Jim.
the calendar so that we can move down to item A and decide then whether to, to pass it or not. So, I would, uh, I would hope we could move forward and go down to that, and then we can discuss it there. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Doty.
You are correct, thank you. I'll, I'll, um, I'll go along with Mr. Doty and, and let that come to A, and we'll just hang on to it.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Madam Clerk?
Debbie Ahern?
Yes.
Danny Bell?
Yes.
Thomas Stoney?
Yes.
Edna Green?
No.
Stan Harville?
Yes.
Bobby Hawn?
Aye.
Tim Horner?
Yes.
Joe Hudson?
Yes.
Peggy Howell?
I'm going to say no.
Bobby Long?
Yes.
Mike Richardson?
Yes.
Wayne Niss Smith?
No.
Kyle Walker?
Yes.
Motion passes. We'll move down to our agenda. Okay, I'm sorry, we do have to approve the whole thing, thank you.
Since this approved, we'll move on and enter in item four B, which is the approval of the regular calendar items with the changes that we just voted on. And I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any more discussion? Okay. Madam Clerk?
Eleven yeas, one nay, one abstain.
Okay, motion passes. That will be on our
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Doty, and that will move down to the Finance Committee that we'll be coming to. Item five, we have, uh, no items removed from the consent calendar. Number six, we have nothing there. Number seven, we have the Justice Center Public Safety to approve the consent calendar. Oh, that's right, we do have to approve the consent calendar. I am so sorry. Uh, we have a motion to approve the consent calendar.
A move, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion. We have a second, thank you. Any discussion on the consent calendar? All right, let's vote the motion.
Twelve yeas, one nay.
Motion passes. We'll move down to number seven, the Justice Center Public Safety Committee, Chairman Tim Horner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, item seven A, change order number twenty-three for one hundred and sixty-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty-two dollars. And I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? C-9, let's vote the motion.
Eleven yeas, two nays.
Motion passes.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Chairman Horner? Go down to item eight, Finance Committee, Chairman Rodney Long.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, if you'll notice, uh, eight A, this will be voted on the board. Uh, it says off the board, it will be voted on the board. Eight A, amending the private act for the county attorney. Section one, county attorney shall be elected by the Hamlin County Legislative Body annually in the September meeting. And I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any more discussion? Let's vote the motion.
Twelve yeas, one nay.
Motion passes.
Move down to A two, section two, county attorney shall be paid on the annual retainer fee of twelve hundred dollars. Also, for the legal services performed on behalf of the county, county attorney shall be entitled to receive additional compensation and reimbursement for actual expenses incurred. And I put that in the form of a motion.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Mr. Doty?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, just a couple of things I wanted to bring up. The private acts that Ms. Noe provided for us. One thing I'd like to bring to everybody's attention, section three. And it is in the first sentence of such, where it said, "Upon meetings of the quarterly county court." This court used to meet four times a year. When this pay was set, it was four times a year. They were giving him three hundred dollars per meeting. What we're asking for now and what people have brought up is not an overreach compared to what this was back in that timeframe. Um, if that was set in today's twelve meetings, you're looking at thirty-six hundred dollars for a retainer fee, which by Ms. Noe's totals here, is actually more than what she has at the thirty-four hundred and forty-seven fifty. This is just to adjust. We have to adjust as we go, as we go through, as we go forward. When you look at retainer fees for attorneys, twelve hundred dollars for a year's retainer for an attorney is a drop in the bucket. You give them that just so that they will stay on your side and represent you. That is nothing when you look at the retainer for them. So, with, with that, I would ask that the members of this body vote for this and support this so that we can provide adequate compensation for our county attorney. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Doty. Ms. Howell?
Yes, sir, thank you. Um, I was trying to look up when we also agreed to, uh, raise the fee to a hundred and seventy-five dollars. And, um, so, I'm, I'm still of the opinion that, um, he agreed upon the twelve hundred, we agreed upon the one seventy-five, and September is fine. And, um, I'm thinking that if it's not broke, we don't need to do anything. And maybe in September, we can realign and see perhaps he may not even be interested in the position at that time. We don't know. But, um, anyway, that's, thank you for letting me say those things.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, Ms. Howell. Ms. Green?
Yes, sir, thank you. First of all, I don't think Attorney Capes asked for this. Second of all, we don't need to add an extra expense for Hamlin County citizens to fork out to. We're gonna be on a tight budget this year, and I don't know about the rest of you. My budget's tight, and everybody I've talked to in my district, their budget is tight. They don't have extra money to put forward. And all I've heard since the day I was put into office was we're gonna have to have another property tax increase, which just means more money is coming out of our citizens' pocket. If we do this, more money will have to come out of the citizens' pocket. I don't see it. If Mr. Capes doesn't want that, let him, let him back out. We can put someone else in. I'm sure there are other, more than qualified candidates that would do that job, that, that wouldn't be happy to represent as an honor for Hamlin County, just as we should be as Hamlin County commissioners. It should be an honor to represent the citizens of Hamlin County. I don't see wasting this money. I, I truly believe with what we've got facing us, with the additional staffing and so forth for the jails, that we need to be more conservative. We don't need to waste this money.
Thank you for your comments. Uh, from my personal opinion, I think it's, uh, a bit of a shame that we've asked a man to do a job in two thousand twenty-five on the nineteen forty-nine pay scale. No one else would do it. Uh, I don't think our attorney should be asked or required to do that. I think it's ridiculous that we've gone this long and not adjusted this. He's done a good job for us, and whether it be Mr. Capes or someone else going forward after September, they deserve the same consideration. They give us professionalism, they give us coverage, they're basically our beck and call. Uh, I do absolutely, I think this is egregious that we've let this go this long. I understand we're, we do have some budget concerns, but nothing that we can't overcome. I think we're in good shape budget-wise, and I think this is a good time to do it. Ms. Howell?
Yes, sir. I agree with a lot of what you said, and we certainly appreciate the work he does. And, uh, but we also do get to see the, um, he is paid for extra stuff he does from, from other departments, and, um, and this was agreed upon, and, and we did up the, the fee. So, um, I'm, I'm comfortable with it as it, as it stands, and, um, I think it's something we should bring up, and by golly, we got a jail opening up, and we've got to fund those, um,
Challenges.
officers. Uh, and, and I believe that we can sit tight for, till then. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else? I think that does it. All right, let's vote the motion.
Ten yeas, three nays.
Motion passes.
Move down to eight B, Budget Amendment. Number one is a fund one-on-one courtroom security for thirteen hundred and ninety dollars, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? C-9, let's vote the motion.
Thirteen yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes.
Go to B two, fund number one-on-one Circuit Court for four thousand and fifty dollars. Put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Vote the motion.
Thirteen yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes.
Go to amendment number three, fund number one-on-one civil defense for two hundred and ten dollars. Put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Let's vote the motion.
Thirteen yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes.
Go to Budget Amendment four. Fund other facilities and maintenance for six thousand, nine hundred and fifty-five dollars. I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Let's vote the motion.
Eleven yeas, two nays.
Motion passes.
Budget number five. Fund number one-on-one planning for four hundred and fifty dollars, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Let's vote the motion.
Thirteen yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes.
Go to fund number six, fund one-on-one Go to fund number six, fund one oh one sheriff's department for four hundred dollars, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Vote to motion.
Thirteen yeas, zero nay.
Motion passes.
Go to fund budget amendment B seven, fund one oh one sheriff's department for thirteen thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars. Put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Vote to motion.
Twelve yeas, one nay.
Motion passes.
Go to eight C, purchase of a new garbage truck. I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Mr. Neesmith.
Talking, they're coming, this is something that the road department says they need because the trucks are all to pieces.
Yes.
They're a pile of junk, is the way I read it.
Some are marked.
And I understand they might be coming, probably coming back at our next budget wanting another truck. So my thought is why you can get this truck for two fifty instead of waiting here to July when they come back wanting another truck, just buy them both while they both got it. I might too, Rodney.
They're not available.
Buy both trucks now instead of the one truck.
It's not available. There's only one available.
Mike, didn't you tell me there's two available?
No, there's just one available.
They sold the other one.
They sold the other one.
That's why I brought it up the other day.
Well, they sold it before we.
You said two was available right now.
No, one was available, one rear loader.
You didn't say two?
They had two on the lot when we first talked about this, but when we got through this process, they'd already sold it for a hot commodity right now.
Matter within ten days, by the time it's come out. So I probably need to just back off on that and just wait until the budget comes up and then try to buy another one, just see how much this gonna cost us. Because there was two ready, on the tenth, there was two vehicles ready.
No, they'd already sold one by the time we got to that. We bought the only one that was available. It's a good point. I think everyone can agree with that, but.
It's in Bristol area waiting on us if we want it.
When did they take this other one, this second one? Do you remember what date they took it?
The first one?
Second one?
Oh, I don't know.
It was before we came to the commission with it.
It done gone?
Yes.
Why did they bring it up? They had two there.
They were simply saying.
I wouldn't have brought it up if I hadn't had two.
But he was simply saying that there were two of them up there, one of them was sold, we had a chance to pick up the other one, and that's what we're trying to do. Anyone else? Rodney?
I'd just like to remind the commission, we do have one on order, side loader, that is coming in, and you know, that we've done already, it's been a year and a half, and it's still.
Still in the ready.
It's all I have.
All right, no more comments, let's vote to motion.
Twelve yeas, one nay.
Motion passes.
Go to eight D, this is a budget amendment for fund one sixteen, garbage and sanitation for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and that is to purchase the garbage truck. I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. I don't think we have any discussion. Let's vote to motion.
Twelve yeas, one nay.
Motion passes.
It's all have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman Long. We'll move down to number nine, the Audit Committee. Back to Chairman Rodney Long.
Go to nine A, acceptance of the Hammond County Government Audit for fiscal year ending June the thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, then we have a second. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Vote to motion.
Eleven yeas, two nays.
Motion passes.
It's all have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman Long. Move down to number ten, RV camper study committee. Chairman Kyle Walker.
I'd like to make a statement before we go into this, and I need to apologize to the commissioners as well as the public. I made a comment in the past about our zoning, having a five hundred square foot homes. I was corrected by someone, I went to our zoning, asked further commission questions about it. It is not in our zoning, in our two thousand and eighteen codes. There is an amendment in the two thousand and eighteen state codes that says any dwelling under four hundred square foot is considered a tiny home, which we don't allow in Hammond County. So I was mistaken when I made that comment. I do apologize for it, ask for your forgiveness for making that mistake before we go on into So we're going to talk first about residing in RV campers. I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. Looking for a second. We do have a second. Mr. Doughty.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've been a vocal, I would say advocate for the people on my behalf about this since minute one. I've tried to get everybody to, you know, come to a consensus where we can allow it. But during this last ten days, I've had forty-seven different people contact me separately talking to me about this and how they are not in support of it. I have yet to have a single person personally contact me and say, yeah, I'm in support of abolishing residing in campers countywide. I would like to make an amendment to this, that we put this to referendum. Let the county residents, if this is the people that want this, let the people vote on it. This is not something we need for infrastructure. This is not something we need to fund the county. This is not something that is going to make or break us as a county. This is something that is desire of some people, and I'm not saying that's bad. Everyone has their own opinions of things. But let's let the majority of the citizens make the decision on whether we'll allow people residing in campers or not. By putting it to referendum, I put that in the form of a motion that we amended for that.
My second. We have a motion for putting this for a referendum. We have a second. Anyone else have a discussion on this? Madam Clerk, call the row, please.
Debbie Aher?
No.
Danny Bell?
Yes.
Thomas Doughty?
Yes.
Edna Green?
Yes.
Dan Harville?
Yes.
Bobby Hahn?
Yes.
Tim Horner?
Yes.
Joe Hudson?
Yes.
Peggy Howell?
Yes.
Rodney Long?
Yes.
Mike Richardson?
Yes.
Wayne Neesmith?
Yes.
Kyle Walker?
Abstained.
I'm sorry. Okay, we've got eleven yeas, one abstained, and one nay.
Motion passes. Set this for referendum.
Price can win.
That'll be in March, this next March. That's when we all have to run again. But next time election comes up, it'll be on referendum.
Mr. Chairman, next election's May the fifth.
May the fifth, of next year.
Yes. That's the primary election for local elections.
We set for May fifth, two thousand and twenty-six, at our next election. Very good. Mr. Walker, you want to move to?
Uh.
Oh, wait, excuse me a minute.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I got a, Ms. Howell.
Thank you, sir. The thing that kept coming back with our, I understand the May, that's, we need to provide, what I heard was a way forward, and why can some people? I don't want the dogs still running around until May. I don't want the sewer running around until May.
Which is what happened.
And, you know, whatever we need to do to enforce some codes, it would be very handy. Anyway, whoever we need to help push those things forward, we're leaving citizens in a bind till then. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Richardson?
Thank you. Couple of things that are weighing on my mind here. One is what Ms. Howell said about what do you do in the meantime? If we abide by the laws and the rules of the county right now, the codes enforcement agent can go out and enforce the code that's in place now. So how does that work? And the second thing is, I would hope that we could, before we take this to referendum, that we would have a way to educate the public on things like, you know, things that are seen, things that are unseen, and economics, we say it's okay, but how does that affect the insurance ratings for the county? If we have a residence or a structure that doesn't meet the adopted building codes, how does that affect other things that we don't look at right now? So I would hope that we could have some sort of, you know, education about that. You know, the needs of the many sometimes outweigh the needs of the few, I think. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Ms. Green.
Thank you, Chairman Long. Two things. Mr. Commissioner Richardson brought up, if they were so unsafe, why have, in God's name, for the last fourteen years have we allowed people to live in them year-round at Cherokee Park? That's the first thing, and we've done it for fourteen years, and this commission's been addressed about it several times. If it's safe enough for that, it ought to be safe enough for our citizens. That's the first thing. Second thing, we issue building permits that they can live in that camper while they're building. If it's not safe to live in, why would we let them live in it for a year or two years while they're building? I mean, let's just be common sense about this.
Well, I don't think there's any question they're not safe.
Well, that was one of the issues that was brought up.
And that's been determined by higher authorities than us.
I agree, sir.
They're not generally safe, but that point is moot right now. We're moving forward with that, and let's.
Can I finish, please?
Sure, go ahead.
Two things. We need to look back. The draft that we were sent to us, no offense intended, it needs to be a lot plainer. It shouldn't take a college degree to make sense of it. Me and Commissioner Howell went through it, and we kept looking for the requirements that they were going to have to meet if it went through. It's not common sense. I don't know who wrote this, but it was not someone with any understanding of the situation. We need a better document, but we also need our citizens to speak up, and we need to listen to our citizens.
You know, you can come up with a proposal at any point.
Well, I wouldn't ask for a proposal, and I think it's something we ought to.
That's the understanding. I wrote out and read that the committee means a ten-point plan, okay, to our campers, people residing in campers would have to abide by it. And I thought that was common sense. And no one jumped on that, nobody stepped in. You didn't step in and say, that sounds like a good idea, let's try to adopt that, let's try to have a counterproposal to what the planning commission did. The planning commission met, that was their, that was not a rule, that was always just guidelines, those were just suggestions. That was their plan. And we have a lot of people in here that's voted continually against removing campers. No time, at no point has anybody said anything other than the fact that they ought to stay. We cannot, for the safety and the sanity, sanitary conditions of the other sixty-seven thousand-plus people in this county, can't do that. You know, I don't know, we had the lady come up, and she was talking about the campers, four of them on one chunk of land, sewage running on the ground, vicious, apparently very vicious dogs. You know, we can't have that. That's not a civil society, and we can't have that. But nobody came up with an alternative plan. The only thing we heard from the people that were against removing campers was, we don't want to make people homeless. Well, neither do I. There's no way I want to make people homeless. That's why, you know, I voted for this referendum. But at the same time, the rest of us are abiding by the law. And I hear a lot of people come up to that podium, and they talk about rules, and how they want us to abide by the rules. Now we want the citizens of this county to abide by the rules. I can't tell you why it's safe for people in Cherokee Park for the last fourteen years living in a camper, you know, but we know they're inherently unsafe, they catch fire, they go up boom, and people get trapped. It could affect our county insurance, it could affect a lot of things. You know, I don't know how you're going to go up to someone that can't afford, except to live in a camper, and tell them they're going to have to throw down maybe ten or twenty thousand dollars to get proper electricity, proper water, and proper sanitation. They're going to look at you like you've got four eyes in your head, and I understand that. So when we come in here and we say, let's do this, we have to use some common sense, we have to think, those folks that are living in those campers, for the most part, they're doing the best they can. We go out there and throw another burden on them of whatever, ten thousand dollars or twenty thousand dollars for a septic system and proper electricity, they can't do that. Then what? You know? And they're going to run their sewage out on top of the ground? You want that beside you? I don't. That's not fair to us. So this is not a black and white closed case. There are pitfalls and problems and everything. I've looked at this, I've looked at this, I sit down and I wrote up a plan. Man, it's not easy. So we're in this quandary, we're in this idea right now that, yeah, we want to be benevolent, we want everybody to live the best they can live, and I get that, and I commend that, and I'm in total one-hundred agreement with it. But at the same time, we cannot have our county trashed up. The people that live in campers, they have no trash pickup, okay? So what do they do with their trash? Not all of them, but a lot of them, and you drive by and look at them, I'm not making this stuff up, they throw their trash outside of their campers. Something serious were to happen to them, God forbid they had a heart attack or a stroke, they call nine-one-one. They have no address. So where's an ambulance going to go to? And I've said this before, you know, it's safety, security, and sanitation, and if they can't have that, then, you know, just living in a camper's not going to do them any good. We're setting them up for possible failure down the road. So, you know, you want to think about this and throw out common sense, or common courtesy, or common decency, or what God's going to do to them. or common courtesy, or common decency, or what God's gonna do to us. You know? I get that. And I lose sleep over this. I think about this. The mayor and I have had many conversations about this very thing, trying to come up with solutions. There's no money in the county budget to put in septic systems for these folks. It's not there. So in lieu of that, what else do we do? Let them run their sewers over into the creek? You know? Contaminate the creek? You know, we went to a meeting the other night out at Union Heights over the new quarry, how it could possibly mess up the groundwater. Well, when you're running human waste onto the ground, it's gonna get into the groundwater. And that's E. coli. We've worked hard, our ag people, I'm on the ag board. They've worked really hard to keep our cows away from our water sources because of that very thing. And now we're letting human beings do the same thing? I'm sorry, I didn't... That's not fair to the other 67,000 people in this county. I hate it for those people that are in that situation. And I want them to live their absolute best life. But folks, the bottom line is, we're at a crossroads here, and we're trying our very best to give them plenty of time to apply for public housing. You know, we're looking at, I think it was 18 months, maybe two years. We were gonna give them two years to get into public housing. Do you realize if we come in here next May, and that referendum fails, and they have to move out, what's gonna happen then? They've not applied for public housing. Now what are they gonna do? We give them six months, they have to move out, they can't get into public housing, then what? We give them two, more than that, really, but after tonight, we would have, before this, we would have officially given them two years to seek other housing. And now that is going on a referendum next May, and over a year. So when you think about, you know, you sit back there, and you come to the podium, and you want to say that we're not this, or we're not that, folks, you don't understand that every member of this commission, the mayor and other folks, have gone over this, and gone over this, and gone over this. And then for people to come to the podium and criticize and complain and make godly threats is unjust. I read an article, I mean, not an article, but a comment on a post the other day, that called everybody, not everybody, but most of the commissioners here, bastards. That was completely and blatantly unfair. Now, I ask the citizens of this county to get real. If you want to help these people in campers, get to work. You come to the podium, you complain, nobody, nobody had an alternative plan for those folks. And I laid it out here on the committee meetings Monday night, and nobody picked it up and took it. So we had one choice to make. Vote for the planning commission's proposal, or vote against it and kick them out the next day. You talk about money? We have campers in this county, we have to inspect them. Tommy McKinney's gonna have to hire another full-time employee. There are ramifications down the line, so don't throw the money issue up. It's much deeper than this, and I apologize for preaching, but that's the bottom line.
Can you finish, sir? May I finish what I was saying, please? When you interrupted me, please? I'm not saying that we don't try. I'm not saying that we don't have a heart. I am gonna say we need to look at it. But we have, we've had reports come in here that we're not to the point. But we have, we've put up with it for 14 years at Cherokee Park, and then we want to kick everybody else out. Well, I was sitting at a planning meeting when Mr. Anderson brought up the hardship clause, which was used with one of my neighbors until those folks passed away. I don't see why we can't, again, use some common sense. And I'm not trying to insult you or anyone else. And if you took it that way, I'll apologize to you upfront. But we need to be working together. I feel like a lot of this is overreach. And I know that several of you don't agree with me. But if we start with this, what else are we going to next? When are we gonna start that you can't have machinery out in the field again? And grace gets so deep, like the planning commission did several years ago. And I was a recipient of that. We just need to be willing to work together with common sense. And no, I don't think the language that you read was proper. But I have a thick enough skin on county commission. I can take what they dish out.
Mr. Mayor?
Chairman, a couple items here. Number one, Cherokee Park is something that we realize has needed work for some time. And this commission has voted to move forward with a plan to correct those issues. I want the public to be aware, we aren't. That is a county-owned entity out there, and we are working to improve those conditions. There's been some mistakes made in the past, and we are working to fix that. Otherwise, somebody living in a camper in a private campground, we have no jurisdiction, and that's within that campground. That's how that happens. But anyway, I just wanted to clear the county. We're trying to work to fix that problem. Okay? We have a plan, and this commission has already voted that plan in, to be honest. Secondly, to all this, this commission just voted to have a referendum. There is a potential issue with that, we don't know. We've got to research. County attorney brought up a point. This body may not have the authority to request a referendum on this particular item. He brought that up. We've gotta research this and get back to you on that idea. And if we can do it, there's also the potential that this body can pull a, ask for a referendum earlier than May 5th or 26th. So anyway, there's some potential here. However, we've got to do some research and figure out if this body can actually hold a referendum on this particular item.
Mr. Mayor, we appreciate that information. Ms. Ahern?
Yes, I apologize for my voice. I've been publicly criticized on Facebook and social media on my thoughts about the camper. And someone here today has said that those of you that don't vote are not Christians. And first to say, I am, ala my Lord. But to point out, in a split second, I had to make a decision. Do we vote what's up for the continuance? People get to have two years to get things together? Or, as I understood it, but I'm so thankful Mr. Richardson clarified, I was thinking, if this is put to a referendum, are the people gonna have to move out tomorrow? That was my split-second thought. So that's why I voted no. But hopefully, they do not have to move out tomorrow. But in a split second, you do, as I did, pray earnestly in that moment, "God, what do you want me to do?" So thank you, Mr. Richardson, and thank you, Bobby, I'm sorry, Mr. Hahn, for clarifying that we're not bad people. We're just trying to make good decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Doughty?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a few things I just want to say, you know? There's the talk of, well, if this goes to referendum, and it doesn't get voted down, they'll be evicted that day. No. This has been on the books since 1988, and there's been no one evicted yet. It's a rule that's there. All this is saying is we won't follow through with it. Can the proceedings be started? Yes. They can be. But it's gonna have to be a judge rule on it before they're gonna send someone out to evict. Our codes enforcement officer doesn't have the authority to go remove someone from their property. Like I said, this has been for many, many, many years. And no one's been evicted yet. No one's been put out. Nothing's gonna happen tomorrow. It was said in our last meeting that if we didn't vote for this, we'd have to throw out our 2018 codes. No. The only changes were made if we vote for it. If we voted against it, it was, nothing changed. It was exactly the way it was. I have voiced the opinion for a long time that if they're hooked up properly, and on one camper per lot, then they should be allowed. You know, I understand that there's people that can't. Well, there's already laws against dumping sewage out on the ground. Excuse me, folks, I appreciate, but we don't need that from the audience. Thank you so much. But we already have that. There is laws against the animals, the vicious animals. We have an animal patrol unit that needs to be taking care of that. I don't know why they're not, or what's going on with it. But something needs to be done there, because there's already laws against that. I mean, they threatened and have fined my grandchildren's parents because their dogs got loose and went down to Ridgewood Market too many times. You know? And they didn't attack anybody, didn't attempt to, just because they weren't on their property. I've had to go down and pick them up many, many times to avoid fines. They're bull masters. They look big, they don't attack anybody. People they're feeding, just store owners don't like them. Understandable, they're property. They have a right to not have them there. But in the past, as Mr. Long brought up, we had a meeting, and we decided, hey, you want to hook it up properly? We're gonna allow it. The next meeting, I couldn't come. Mr. Long informed us that no one would agree to that from the audience at that point. Everybody wanted to complain about that. So it got changed to this. As the county mayor and our county attorney's looking at whether we have the authority or not for this referendum, that would give people some time to think on what changes we need to make, what changes are gonna be a have-to today or can go tomorrow. There's a lot of misconceptions on the way people think about what's gonna happen. Think about it, you know, from the whole viewpoint, stepping back. And, you know, like Mr. Chairman Hahn has said, come up with some things that will help. I call it this because I hated it in school, and I hate it now. We don't need to do grade school punishment, which is punishing everybody for what very few offenders do, or for what a group of offenders do. If you've got 30 that are doing something wrong, or 300, fix those. Leave the 30 that are doing it right alone. They should not be penalized because somebody else is doing something wrong. As far as safety, I said it in my last meeting. Where do we become the guardians over someone? Where do we step up and say, "Oh, you can't decide whether that's safe for you or not, and I'm not gonna let you do it"? That's not our place. That's not what we're put here for, that's not what we're elected for. So as Chairman Hahn said, I would hope that folks could come back and look at things, and make a decision on a way to move forward positively as we're finding out about this legality of such. And we could come to consensus, and we could work together at it. But with that being said, Chairman, with the chance that we do not have this authority, and before we don't know the date as to such, I would make a motion that we table this until we can find out whether we have that authority or not before we proceed on to other avenues.
I'll second it.
Thank you, sir. So I'll have a second.
We have a motion to table.
While we're deciding on whether or not...
Residing in RVing campers? We have a second?
Just for Part 8, for right now.
Yeah, just for the residing part. We haven't gotten to the second part yet. Okay? Mr. Neesmith?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, let's...
On one parliamentary party, if the body decides to table this, they would need to rescind that prior motion. They need to rescind that from the time being and move forward with the table.
Oh, but we are going to work towards finding out the legality of this.
Sir, we'll work to find out and present this body with that information soon as possible.
With that information brought forth, I will amend my motion to rescind the motion for a referendum temporarily until we can find out the legalities and the technicalities of a referendum on this matter. And I put that form of motion.
Second. You'll have your second. I'll second. You still have a second. Mr. Neesmith?
What you brought up a while ago, you know, you gave it, I'm gonna call it your fire and brimstone speech. And it was good. It was something that comes from planning commission. Living in a camper, as long as you're in A1. You got sewer, you got electric, you got water, you got setbacks. You can't have this thing in front of your house. You lot sold dirt, you can have it in the back of your house. But you brought up something about 911, and something that we've not talked about here on... I keep saying what Jerrison County's doing, what the state of Tennessee did January the 1st. You can tax people that live in campers, in campgrounds, or anywhere else. And when you do that, if you tax a man for his camper, you've gotta give him an address. You gotta give him...
Crash.
448 West Croxdale Road, that's his address. And GPS will pick up on it, where admirals can come to his house. So, you know, these things could be worked out before it comes down to the referendum. And I think a referendum is just the life's resort. We need to get this resolved. But the point that you had, Bobby, was what we need to go at. Now, if people are not gonna live in a camper, if they're not gonna go with these rules, they can't get approved to live in a camper. And they can get their taxes taken. You get a tax bill, you can pay it. That's all I had on...
How are you gonna tax a camper? How will you tax a camper? I buy a new camper, $75,000, I put it on a lot. For five years, that camper's worth $15,000.
Okay. Well, I don't know how... Jerrison County, you send out a farm...
Jerrison County is just building a camper.
You go ahead. That's what I understood, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Doughty.
Just one last thing, if I could, really quick. As far as the 911, I worked with the volunteer fire department and emergency management agency for many, many years. I've been dispatched to many farms that didn't have residents attached to them. My mother owns a plot up in Russellville, Watchburg area, on Pullen Road, that has no residents on it. It has a barn, but it has no residents. The way you tax it is by improvement to the property. You're not taxed on your home, you're taxed on the improvement to the property. And, you know, you're still paying tax on property, whether you've got something on it or whether you don't. You do have a way to gain access to 911 services, power, water, without having a residence there. It's been done for decades. And as far as I know, it's still done today. I don't know that they've turned down anybody as far as having a water tap or electric tap, or paying taxes on it.
Yeah, that's the problem, though.
This property is three and a half acres, and just recently looked at the assessed value, and it's over $75,000 because of the improvements to such. And, you know, you can have a house on it. If that house is junky, it's gonna deter from the property value. It's gonna take away from it. Just a camper does not mean anything there. But yes, they can get 911 services and know where they're at. About having it.
Madam Clerk, call the row.
Debbie Ahern?
Yes.
Danny Bell?
Yes.
Thomas Doughty?
Yes.
Edna Green?
Yes.
Stan Harble?
Yes.
Bobby Hahn?
Yes.
Tim Horner?
Yes.
Joe Hudson? Peggy Howe?
Yes.
Rodney Long?
Yes.
Mike Richardson?
Yes.
Kyle Walker?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item 10B, storage of campers. I put that in a form of a motion. We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion?
Can you clarify what you've?
Go ahead.
To rescind and table. And that's what Bobby, the chairman long passed along to the clerks. Should we table this part B?
Well, we don't know yet.
Depends on someone wants to or not. Make that motion.
Ms. Green?
I have some concerns with part B. If you've got over, you've got two or three children, and you have a camper as well, and you're telling me that only two of my children can leave their camper at my house for storage? I have a problem with that. What's keep you from saying next, "I can't have my bush hog sitting there. I can't have my enclosed trailer sitting there." I have problems with it. I'm like Doughty. I think it's an overreach as well.
Anyone else have any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I think it's a moot point.
Yes.
You're not going to do the other one.
We can't do one without the other.
We have to. It's on the agenda.
Can we make a motion to table it?
Yeah. Well, you can. Yes.
Chairman, can we, can I make a motion to table this until we?
Well, we have a motion to table this one. Second. We have a second. Call the row.
Debbie Ahern?
Yes.
Danny Bell?
Yes.
Thomas Doughty?
Yes.
Edna Green?
Yes.
Stan Harble?
Yes.
Bobby Hahn?
Aye.
Tim Horner?
Yes.
Peggy Howe?
Yes.
Rodney Long?
Yes.
Mike Richardson?
Yes.
Kyle Walker?
Yes.
Unanimous. Motion passes. We've tabled both of those regarding the RV campers. And the mayor and attorney caps will be looking into putting that on a referendum. And once again, we'll come back and address this later. Real quickly, I know we've been here a long time. I was keeping in mind our committee meetings next month will be April 14th, 5:00 in this room. Our commission meeting will be April 24th, 5:00 in this room. One other thing, real quick. Uh, we got a request that, I know everybody's been issued a badge, either a lanyard or a, a magnetic badge. If we could please, if you don't have one, then you can see, uh, that we need to, uh, we need to wear those, at least to get in as an identifier. And I know we had some problems a couple of weeks ago, or a couple of months ago, whatever, with getting certs coming in. So if you'll wear those, you're given those, you're asked to wear them, so please, let's wear those when we come to our meetings at the court. Y'all have a safe journey home. We stand adjourned.